Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call the January 7th regular City Council meeting to order. And I'd like to ask those of you who'd like to join the council and myself in the pledge of allegiance to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, deliberate, and just for all.
I was thinking maybe because it's the beginning of the year, we'd have a smaller crowd tonight, but we have quite a healthy-sized audience. The first item under special business today is AB 7690, election of council president and deputy council president for 2019. The agenda bill that is in the packet outlines the duties of the council president and deputy president, and also some compensation information, and a bit about our process that we'll go through tonight. The process will look like this. As chair, I will call for nominations for each position, one at a time. When all nominations have been made, I will ask if there's a motion to close the nominations. I'll then call for a vote on the motion to close nominations. At that point, council members will then be provided with an opportunity to discuss nominees, and I will ask council members to cast votes by a show of hands. The council member receiving the majority vote is declared council president. I'll repeat that process again for deputy president. So first, for the position of council president, I'd like to open the floor for nominations. Councilmember Hunt.
I nominate Tola Martz.
Thank you.
Second?
And I was going to ask a question. Do we need to have a second for a nomination? So no seconds are required, but I will ask for confirmation from councilmember Martz if he would like to stand for the nomination.
Yes, I would.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein.
I move that we close nominations.
Thank you. There's been a motion to close nominations. All in favor? Oh, sorry. That does need a second.
Second.
There you go. It's been moved and seconded. Thank you, Tisha. All those in favor of closing nominations, show a hand, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And I will call for a vote on the motion, oh, discussion of the candidate, if you would like to. Councilmember Ray.
I just wanted to identify some things that I think are really important characteristics of our leaders, and it applies both to the council president and to the deputy president. These are things that I'm looking for. And one is to be engaged, and that's be engaged with the council, be engaged with the administration, be engaged with the people who live here. Number two is to do what's right always, even when it's not always easy. Understand perspectives and seek common ground. To always be seeking to improve both oneself and the institution that is this council. The challenge assumptions and the status quo. To create stability during periods of turmoil that we will undoubtedly have, and ultimately to make this council a better council for the people who live here.
Thank you. Are there any other council members who would like to discuss the nominees? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor for councilmember Martz for council president for 2019, show your hands. Thank you. Councilmember, the vote is six and oh. Congratulations, council president Martz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you fellow council members. I appreciate your trust.
So now we'll go for the position of deputy council president. Let's begin with nominations. So I'm opening the floor for nominations. Councilmember Winterstein.
I'd like to nominate Mariah Batiste for deputy council president.
Mariah?
I accept.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations from the floor? Councilmember Ray.
I'd like to move to close nominations.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close nominations. Is there any discussion on the nominees? And I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of councilmember Batiste for deputy council president, raise your hand. Oh, sorry.
You have to call for the vote to close nominations.
Oh, sorry. Call for the vote to close nominations. Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Call for the favor and vote to vote, call for the vote in favor of closing nominations. Raise your hands. Thank you. Nominations are closed. Any discussion of the candidates? Seeing none, call for the vote. Councilmember Batiste for deputy council president for 2019, raise your hands. Thank you. That's, Mariah didn't vote, but I'm assuming she would. So that's a unanimous vote. Congratulations.
Madam Mayor, can I, just to come up?
You're council president.
So I just want to add, you know, we're going to be talking about revising the council handbook coming up, and one of the things that I would like to proposably add to it is this process that we just went through, maybe how do we codify it a little bit? I have gotten some feedback from folks that they'd like to understand it's a little, it can be a little bit of voodoo, and it isn't necessarily always as transparent as we'd like. So if you want to think about that, understand that I'll be requesting that we add that to the retreat, the first retreat that we have as we talk about the handbook.
Thank you. So congratulations. And we will move into audience comments. Audience comments is a regular part of our meeting. Deputy council president Batiste.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to thank all of my fellow council members for their trust and support, and we do have a lot of work ahead of us this year. And I did want to echo what councilmember Martz talked about. It just, one of those things that popped up recently is that how could we better sort of codify what we're working on here, but looking forward to working with all of you and getting all your feedback. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Thank you very much. So we'll move on to audience comments, which is a regular part of our council meeting. Audience members may address the council at this time. The guidelines for public participation are displayed on the screen. Please limit your comments to three minutes this evening. Those who signed up to speak will be called forward first, and if you did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting, so you will have a chance to speak. If you're here on behalf of a group, can you please identify a spokesperson for your group? And for any audience members who are listening tonight and hearing information or a point that they want to support, please indicate to the council by raising your hand so they can understand which items you're supporting. And, Tisha, has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, Ken Easman.
My name is Ken Easman. I reside at 2473 Northwest Stony Creek Drive, and tonight I am representing the Talis Residential Association, and we would like to express our thanks to city staff and city council for the support and the partnership in 2018. It was a year in which we had significant activity in our community, and we appreciate the outstanding support from the following. First off, a big thank you to the team that brought the Bergsma acquisition home, Parks Director Watling, Mayor Polly on the city council. And I can tell you, we're very excited to see its extension to Harvey Manning Park. Big thank you to Tony Nguyen and Butch Wire of the Public Works Engineering for their tireless support in getting our top-of-the-hill project finished after the big city public works project up there. Doug Schlep for all of the complicated engineering that he's involved in, in our community. Doug Yormick, who helped us with our open space reforestation projects. Another open space advocate, Matt Meckler, for all of his help, and congratulations to Matt for his recent award. Sean Kurtz, Public Operations, water supply issues for our irrigation, quite helpful. Chief Bearbaum and Issaquah Police Department for all of the help in getting our parking issues sorted out. Thank you to Lucy Sloan and Keith Niven and Lisa Gouge for keeping our community updated with quarterly meetings and attendance in our annual meeting, and all of the hard work in ending our Talis Development Agreement. And a big thank you to the people at the city who worked to get the Issaquah School District to see the value of our Talis parcel 17B for our new middle school. We don't know who you actually all are, but we think behind the scenes, there must have been a great amount of advocacy there for the Talis community. And then lastly, a real big thank you to Public Works Operations. Over the weekend, after the big windstorm, we had some blocking trees on our roads. They were up there. On Sunday, taken care of all of that, and they came back today to clean the rest of it up, did a wonderful job in getting rid of all the debris. And I can tell you that our community is really thankful and grateful that these folks are available seven by 24 when there is an emergency, and they're there to keep us all safe. So in conclusion, best wishes for a fabulous 2019.
Thank you, Ken. Tisha?
Daphne Gan.
Daphne Gan, 22539 Southeast 45th Street in Providence Point. And I want the council to know that I watch you and your budget committee regularly on TV. I probably have spent more time with you than any other person in Issaquah. As you all probably know, the Providence Point people have been depending upon the council to fund a traffic light. And we could have brought, you know, 20 cane-waving senior citizens down, but instead, I'm going to give you a brief summary of just a couple of the people that I've heard from. I'm on the committee, so I oftentimes hear more than I want to know. But I support you because I know how hard you work and how difficult it must be to have to sort out all the demands of a small city like Issaquah. Okay, first of all, there's Dee, who lives down the street. He's a 90-some-year-old veteran, retired salesperson, who drives from Providence Point to the Veterans Hospital for procedures. Some mornings, when he is trying to get out early in the morning to make a left-hand turn, there might be seven cars waiting to get on the freeway, and sometimes people do reckless things when they have that many people. And so for Dave, I'm speaking. Okay? There's Tom and Mary. Tom is a retired grocery person. Mary is, oh, I shouldn't have said Mary. It's T and M. Mary is a homemaker. Tom volunteers at the baby corner, and he leaves Forest Village in the afternoon. And he said that sometimes there are, in the 30s, number of cars who go zipping by coming up the hill before he can get out. And he said it's really hard for him to sit there and wait, but he doesn't want to risk driving out. And then there's the young couple who live, young by that, I mean people in their late 60s. They live at the bottom of the hill, and he likes to walk across the street to play pickleball. Can you imagine walking across Southeast 43rd Street? You know, he said it's very daunting. So for those people, I am speaking. I also want you to, you know, I listen to folks, and I understand where they're coming from, but I also understand where you're coming from. I've been around the block a few times in my life, been to a few city council meetings all over the western Washington. One of the things they all, especially those who've been there.
Your comment period has ended. Please summarize.
Okay. What they say is they were promised the traffic light. And the other thing they say is we've been paying taxes all these 20-some years we lived in Providence Point, and even though I explained to them from your point of view, I do hope that you can come up with councilmatic bonds because you didn't approve the funds from the reserve fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Daphne. I should point out, we normally have a timer, but we've had an outage, and so Tisha's keeping the time on her phone, and so when you are close to your time, she's going to let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Daphne. Next? Next, we have Leo Graham.
Good evening. Leo Graham, 22609 Southeast 44th Lane. And I'm the newly-minted chair of the Government Affairs Committee at Providence Point. I'm one of those almost cane-carrying people that have moved into Providence Point in the last few years. And I'm here to again encourage the city council to look wherever they can find funds to support that intersection at Providence Point. The signalization of that area is, we think, very important under the current circumstances. The traffic is horrific in the morning and the evening from the commuters, but also with the new school, the high school going in immediately adjacent to us, up the hill from us, the traffic is going to be that much worse during the rest of the day, certainly during the time that the kids are coming in and out of school. So there's 1,000 units there, and they've been looking for this stoplight or this signal for many years, and we know the city's committed to it, and we know the city's done the study. So if the city can find a way to find funding for it, I think it's really critical now because we're reaching a point where the traffic is just basically impossible during certain parts of the day, times of the day. And with the new high school, it'll only be worse. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Leo. Next, we have Yuri.
My name is Yuri Vasiliya. 1205 Oak Creek Place, northwest.
Yuri, I'm going to get you to stand a little closer to the microphone. There you go.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, yeah. So I live, I'm resident of Issaquah for, since 2007. So I'm here to represent kids, children, and students of our school district, who every day commute to their schools. And so I bow to help them to have safety and comfort to have, going to the school. So like usual situation when the rain starts, rainy season, and this is like kind of picture that shows how kids wait to, for a school bus, and they, they, I mean, it's about safety and about the comfort. So how we can help them to do this? I know this is like, this is all the years, all the time, but can we do something from this point to provide them more safety and more comfort, especially if when we build in a modern city, like going forward? So, and this is like, and this is, becomes like very typical picture, like every morning like this, and when like cars drive by, they splash kids, and this is when they're like the elementary school kids staying, but the middle school and high school, they're in like worst position, nobody with umbrellas there, they're just staying in the dark. So what we can help here, we can help to provide like simple shelters here. So how we can do this? And there are examples, some in other places, some community built it together. So I'm asking whether city can help and think about when the building future of the city, like especially like one of the example, Newport Corridor Design, whether we can include those, and it maybe not permanent, maybe it will be removable, but cooperate with the Issaquah School District transportation and help to build those shelters. They can be like this, can be like any variety, even like this fancy stuff, so, but something that provides safety for kids and cover them from rain. And if, one of the ask, because I'm living the, on the intersection where the road widening will be happening really soon for Newport Way, and this is like design and outline here like possible places where at least we can start from that, from our neighborhood where the, the school bus shelter can be installed. And we have a petition from the, our neighborhood, and so there is like a bunch of signatures collected from the, from our neighbors. So, and this is like fully for support to help, ask the city to sponsor or somehow cooperate or work with the developers across the street, Riva developers, to install, to spend like a few thousand dollars more to spend nice school bus shelter for kids. So there will be like really sign how city cares about kids and how we can protect them from, basically provide more safety and more comfort.
Yuri, do you want to bring up the signed petition to?
Yeah.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much, and I'm, yeah, leaving this. Thank you.
Thank you, Yuri. No one further has signed up to speak. Is there anyone here this evening that would also like to address the council? I see one in the front row. If you could state your name and address, that would be awesome.
Thank you. My name is Bill Bergsma. I live at 29212 Southeast Issaquah Falls City Way, or Road, in Falls City, Washington, about six miles up the hill. I guess tonight I'm representing the Bergsma trustees, 28 trustee heirs who have been waiting for decades to finally get a sale on the Henry Bergsma property. We thought the sale had been accomplished by our older generation, our parents, in 1989, when a Chinese corporation apparently made an initial payment and then left the country. I think they went to Vancouver, buying property up there instead. I never knew if they had even addressed the city planning department or anything else. Well, we went through several people who wanted to buy the property and build a few homes up there, and some of them want to build a lot of homes or even condos, but each one kind of got strung along for about five or six years with changing expectations and so forth. And I was kind of happy to hear that the current builder, the CBRE, and you have met with Greg Crabbe a number of times over the last several years, that it looks like something was finally happening. The last notice I got, and I've been on the mailing list, I think, for a long time, was about last June. So I was quite shocked delivering some magazines to Spiritwood Senior Living, a facility where I used to go up there and do weekly current events with some of the older people who wanted to stay in tune with what was going on in the world, part of my retirement exercises. And so I was bringing them some magazines to read, nice colorful ones like Country and Country Extra, and one of the magazines goes back and refreshes your memory from the 50s and the 60s and so forth. And lo and behold, when I walked in the door, I saw the Sammamish Valley Shopper up there and the headlines, which I have here, but you know what it was from the meeting on December 3rd about the city buying the Bergsma property. And I thought, how did this happen? I had not, had not been informed of any of this from either the buyer or the city or planning department or anybody. I didn't know whether to jump for joy or scream and shout, who did it and why? I've had conversations with Ken Konigsmark since then, and he'd been, he told me earlier last summer that he was working with King County and Dow Constantine to get money together to buy the property and working with the city and the Trust for Public Land, but I hadn't heard anything. So I was a little disappointed. So at the point, I keep hearing reservations and getting congratulations for making a big property deal, and I'm the oldest of the trustees and the closest one living here and knew nothing about it until I saw that article in the paper. So I was a little upset, and I, I talked with one of the other trustees, who lives about 10 miles out here in Hobart, one of my cousins, and he's sort of in the dark too, although he had been talking with him on with the CB, I keep forgetting, I should get their name, CBRE, and their real estate party. So I just like no, I haven't signed anything off. I don't know where I'd go from here when everybody's planning on what they're going to do and how much they're going to pay, and it's all news to me. I'm a little distraught that I haven't been included somewhere in here with what's going on, either from the planning department or for Jim or Greg Crabbe at what was our buyer's, going to build hopefully 54 homes up there at one time.
Sir, please summarize your comments.
I am just a little bit disturbed, I guess. How do I relay the information and data to 28 would-be heirs, who many of them are up in their 80s, at least late 70s, and thought their parents were going to sell that property and have something to retire on? So I don't know if you have a suggestion, who should I touch base with in the city? I can touch base with Greg Crabbe, I believe, but is this?
You know what I would suggest, Bill? Thank you for your comments. We can also talk with you offline. We have our city administrator, Emily Moon, that's out now with the audience in the back, and she can chat with you. The council has directed the Trust for Public Lands to make an offer to purchase the property. So not sure what's going on on the trustees' end, why agents that are working for you aren't relaying information back to you, but I'm sure Ms. Moon can give you some additional information or opportunities to talk if you just want to catch her in the hall right now. She's waiting for you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council this evening? Tina?
Happy New Year to everyone. My name is Tina Conforti, and I live at 1220 Oakwood Place, northwest Issaquah. And I like to address the shelter that one of our neighbor is putting together, and I think this is the most important thing that I always try to promote, the safety in a community. So to keep our children safe with all of the construction in our area, it's going to be so much traffic, and we don't want to lose another child in our neighborhood. Safety comes first. Remember, these kids, they stand on a corner, and the car coming in and out of our area, plus the construction here that we have. We cannot make without the shelter. I would suggest to do that and not leave any more children in our neighborhood lost their life. That's once and forever. Please, keep our children safe. That's the most important thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Would anyone else like to address the council? Mr. Kapler, and I see Kathy as well, and he's letting you go first, Kathy.
Thank you. Good evening and Happy New Year, everyone. I'm just here to make a brief presentation. It occurred to us that the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm sorry, Kathy McCory, 155 Northwest Gilman Boulevard, Chamber of Commerce. It occurred to us that when we finished our legislative agenda, which is for 2019 and 20, we did not formally present it. I think we sent it out in email to the council. So this evening, I'm just here to formally present to you and make a brief statement. The Chamber of Commerce Board endorses and strongly advocates for pro-business actions in support of the overall economic vitality of Issaquah, including affordable housing, diversity of business and jobs, and infrastructure to add to and improve our quality of life. Successful implementation of these opportunities enables a strong, thriving business climate that helps keep our community whole and provides for the jobs, services, and support our citizens require. Our overall vision is to make greater Issaquah region the best place to do business on the east side, and we ask the city to collaborate in this regard. We thank the city and its council for the work on behalf of our community and for your commitment to Issaquah being the best city it can possibly be. The chamber and our board look forward to being of service and collectively helping you with all issues supporting Issaquah. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Dave Kapler?
David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. I've been following the issue of laminated rut-rut for decades up on Tradition Plateau and just above the root rot for decades up on Tradition Plateau and just above the East Sunset Trailhead. Now, of course, it's been an issue over on the property the city acquired from King County Roads Department. I was pretty shocked today when I I knew there was some activity going down on on Second with a saw boom of some kind of truck or something and went down to check and what had happened. And if you haven't been down to see the the trees that have fallen down in that area just south of the the old Skateboard Park, it is unbelievable. And I think I know quite a bit about trees and health, and I've been working with on a something completely separate from my usual work with Issaquah Alps, working with arborists and dealing with some arborists that we're dealing with. They're experts and have all the certification for dealing with hazardous trees. And I was shocked to find out how many hazardous trees we have close by in an area that I have walked through many times and had not known, have recognized it. So I'm not trying to, Jeff is maybe in the back right now, but I'm not trying to blind the park department or the city, but it seems like we need some catch-up to do on evaluating our trees for safety. The other thought came to me is this was predicted to hit at 2 a.m. and it did. What happens if if that storm had been predicted to hit at 1 p.m. or at noon? What would have happened? Would the kids already been all at school? If they had been dismissed early or whatever, you can just imagine, you go down and see those trees down on that walkway that connects the high school and Clark Elementary and the middle school. It's pretty dramatic. So how we coordinate for storm closures ahead of time, just like we do for snow, is something I hope the fire and police and the city staff and the rest will be thinking about a little bit more. Because we've had a lot of wind events, and if you look at your weather radar and turn on the wind thing, there's an amazing circular activity off the coast of Oregon that's going to come to us about Wednesday. How much wind, we don't know, but they're talking about very strong east winds, which is a different direction than all these trees have been used to getting. So I guess it's an urging for some staffing. I do have a sample of a root there. It is unbelievable. And when you look at it, you'll see why it's called laminated root rot, because everything is, except for that ring of the tree, the rest is gone. And there's it's just, this is still wet, but there's not much there holding those trees up. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening or drop off a biological specimen for the council to do? Come on to the microphone.
I'm Steve Loper. I live at 19535 Southeast 51st Street, somewhere over here near South Cove. And I just wanted to express my support for taking this once in maybe a lifetime opportunity to work with DOT on their installation of the sound wall and provide a safe pedestrian bicycle access for all the 800 residents or 800 homes in that South Cove, Sammamish Beach Club area. I think a lot of people there that would normally may want to walk into town or bicycle into town choose not to do so, and they get in their car and they drive into town to go to dinner, get groceries, or whatever, because of the unsafe nature of that very narrow walkway and along those the shoulder of that road without without much without much safety there. So just, I won't I won't keep you more than the three minutes. I just wanted to show up and express that.
Thank you very much, Steve. Is there anyone else who would like to address council this evening? Second call, anyone liking to address council under audience comments? And last call. Seeing no one else, I'll close audience comments. And I want to thank you all for coming this evening. A couple of things I want to mention is the reason we're hearing about the signalization at 43rd and the reason we're hearing about the trail along West Sikes managed parkways, because while the council completed a lot of their work on the budget, they did approve some capital projects that didn't have identified funding sources. And the council will be working on having those discussions during the first quarter. So I appreciate that the residents from those communities are still tracking and paying attention and looking for answers to see how those projects might be funded. Thank you for coming this evening. But also to all the others who came to talk about either thank you lists for what the council was working on last year, suggestions for children's school bus shelters, hearing from one of the Burgsma family members about the Burgsma property, and also for the chamber for coming tonight and sharing their agenda with us. And of course, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Dave for bringing us a rotten piece of tree. So thank you all for coming this evening. We're going to move on to committee and regional reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Council Infrastructure Committee met on December 20. Bill Ramos chaired, but as he was elected to serve as state representative, I'll be doing the report out this evening. We had two franchise agreements which are on consent. They are AB 770 Telecommunications Small Wireless Cell Franchise Agreement Verizon Wireless and AB 7701 Telecommunications Small Wireless Cell Franchise Agreement AT&amp;T New Singular Wireless. Those are both on consent this evening, and the committee's recommendation was to approve. And then also in the project updates portion of that meeting, we got an update on the Southeast 62nd Extension, which is projected to be open near the end of January, which is coming right up. The next council infrastructure meeting will be January 17 at 6:30 here in council chambers. And then I have a few upcoming regional meetings that I wanted to report out. The King Conservation District Advisory Committee will will have a draft work plan workshop, and that will be Saturday, January 12. And the workshop will be at the KCD office in Renton. It will be an opportunity for stakeholders to review the elements of the proposed draft plan of work and budget for the 2020 to 2025 strategic plan for the King Conservation District. Then the Cascade Water Alliance will have a special meeting of the board tomorrow, and there will also be a Resource Management Committee meeting Thursday, January 10 at the Cascade office in Bellevue. And the first meeting of the year for the Wyra 8 Salmon Recovery Council will be Thursday, January 17. And that will be at a at a new location for that council, which is the Department of Ecology in Bellevue. And this concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. The Services and Safety Committee met on December 11 in council chambers. There were two agenda items, Agenda Bill 7693, Amending IMC Title III Revenue and Finance to Streamline the Accounts Payable Process, and Agenda Bill 7696, Termination of an Interlocal Agreement for Public Defense Monitoring Services with the City of Snoqualmie. Both of these items are on this evening's consent agenda. The Services and Safety Committee will meet again tomorrow on January 8 at 6:30 here in council chamber. We have a single agenda item, and we'll receive an update on economic development activities through the end of 2018. The Eastside Fire and Rescue Board met on December 13 at Eastside Fire and Rescue Headquarters. Significant agenda items were a review of the 2017 standards for coverage and response time and goals in a briefing on the plans for moving forward, the 2019 Annual Agenda Calendar, 2019 Legislative Agenda Calendar, Agenda Bill 2018-38, which suspended the MVA pilot program, which is significant. This was the recovery project for recovering cost of medical response on I-90. Additionally, there was a South King County Training Consortium presentation, as we're going to be moving our training to South King County. And finally, the last one was the Agenda Bill to approve the moving of the training consortium. So the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board will meet again this week on January 10 at 4 o'clock in Eastside Fire and Rescue Headquarters. One significant item is the approval of an interlocal agreement with Kirkland, Shoreline, Woodville, and Redmond to share the use of emergency reserve equipment. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Puget Sound Regional Council's Growth Management Policy Board met last Thursday, January 3. We're in the in the process of updating Vision, excuse me, updating Vision from 2040 to 2050. And we're in a series of meetings where we're taking existing chapters within Vision, and staff is presenting to us perspective changes, and we're discussing them at the board. So no action is being taken. But at the Thursday meeting, we had conversations about the existing chapters on transportation, annexation, and urban growth area, health in the built environment, and health in the built environment. And the transportation conversation, I will say, you know, the GMPB really doesn't get into transportation settings. So really, I think what's going to happen to update of that chapter is it's basically going to adopt the regional transportation plan that was adopted last year. So it's going to formalize that and get that into Vision. In the areas of the annexation and urban growth boundary area, there is very strong ongoing support for maintaining the urban growth area and the boundary. And PSRC was floating the idea of should we, PSRC, not us, not me, PSRC as an organization, get involved with changes to the urban growth boundary area? And there was a resounding no, that the existing counties and jurisdictions have been handling that over the last few decades, have good processes, they're very localized, and they worked. So I think that message was very clear. One thing that I learned too, and this I think will affect everybody in the state if the if the board's recommendation is carry forward, we've been through annexations, and we knew that there was a sales tax credit to the city of Issaquah if we were to annex a place that had sales tax. That reimbursement program from the state is not available to most jurisdictions outside of Seattle. In fact, outside of King County, excuse me. So Snohomish, Kitsap, and Pierce Counties haven't had this available to them. And as a result, there's been a lot more growth outside the urban growth area without annexations, or inside the growth area that are not in cities without annexations. And so that's counter to the vision for managing growth. Annexation is what even the county and the Growth Management Act envisions that developed urban areas will annex into nearby cities. But that hasn't been happening. There's a very strong voice was spoken for taking a legislative position with the state that that sales tax credit be available to more cities, not just those within King County. So that would be, that would affect, I think, everybody in the state. So that was a very interesting conversation about annexation in general. And health policy, it's amazing, we have visions for managing growth that have very comprehensive policies regarding the health of the of the people that live here. And I think where the way this is going to move is rather than being just its own chapter within Vision, probably be a topic that permeates every single other chapter. And so we know, we've talked about it in our own urban planning, how when we making sure that there are green spaces, open spaces, and parks, and making sure that people have access and healthy access to services. Those are all have a very strong health component. And I think it's going to come out as a very rich and very strong update to Vision 2050 when it's complete. So we discussed all of those, and that was a two-hour meeting, and I condensed it in a few minutes. But good conversation. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Land and Shore Committee did not meet in January, so I do not have a report. And I'm not sure who will be chairing in February. So that's that's what I have to report. Thanks.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Patisse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Eastside Human Services Forum met on December 4 for their 2018 annual meeting. And the focus of that was based on something that so much work has been done over the last year, which was the opiate and heroin crisis, the next steps to make a difference. Basically, this was a collaborative effort involving all the members across the East Side to further brainstorm on the options that had already been presented from the King County Heroin and Prescription Opiate Addiction Task Force. The recommendations had come forward, and this was further work and response from Eastside cities about what what they are doing in these areas and what they could share and could be done differently. It focuses on primary prevention, treatment, expansion, and enhancement, and user health services and overdose prevention. I just, I just want to say, over the last year, there's been so much work done by these groups and by the Eastside Human Services Forum in this particular area. And it was great to see all of the recommendations come forward, but then even a further further pass at trying to look across the Eastside cities to see what could be done and what could be shared. So just a lot of good, strong work that's really been done in that area that that I know our Human Services Group and Health and Sustainability will be looking at. The Puget Sound Regional Council Economic Development District Board met on December 5 the next day. And that was, we started with a presentation from the Association of Washington Cities on the growing, on growing the green economy in Washington State called Eco-Nomics. And it was a high-level examination of four industry groups essential to address climate change in Washington, water, agriculture, forestry, and building materials. And I think this presentation was really fascinating. So if you get a chance to look at it, or I can send it forward, but it really shows some really strong leadership coming from Washington State in these areas. The, we also discussed our 2019 Economic Development District Focus for 2019, and everybody had a chance to throw out different ideas. So more information coming on that soon. And the next meeting will be Wednesday, February 6. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Council President Mertz?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. In terms of Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee, there is a meeting this Wednesday, January 9 at 7 p.m. in Renton City Hall. Number of topics to be discussed, but nothing is on the path towards taking action. There is the Pre-PIC Workshop is, I think, particularly interesting this month. Emergency Management at the local level, regional coordination and emergency response in King County. Local police, fire, and public works departments are often the first to respond in emergencies. The January Pre-PIC Workshop, we will explore what your city can do to ensure that response plans are effectively in place for new and emerging hazards, learn about the role of large and small cities, and hear from the King County Office of Emergency Management about ongoing work to improve regional planning and coordination. And I'll point out that we don't currently have an Issaquah rep on the County Emergency Management Advisory Committee. So if you're interested in this, this is open to all SCA members and not just PIC members. Another way to meet your fellow SCA members, Sound Cities Association Networking Dinner is Wednesday, January 30. I believe Joanne sent Joanna sent a note on this in terms of if people are interested. If you haven't done one of these networking dinners, they're really interesting. You get there early and and get to talk to all sorts of interesting peers in cities, large and small, from, you know, what's, oh, I can't believe I forgot, the one up on Highway 2 that's in King County that-
Skye Comish?
Skye Comish. We have a rep from Skye Comish who actually comes to PIC meetings. And he's like one of 120 people in the whole city. Anyhow, those networks dinners are really great. County Executive Constantine is going to be the special guest this month. So if you've never seen him in person, it'd be an interesting introduction as well. King County Growth Management Policy Council will have its first meeting of the year. We're not meeting quite as often as Paul's GMPB, but Wednesday, February 27 at 4 p.m. in PSRC chambers. And I don't know what the agenda is yet. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President. Going to move on to the mayor's report. There was an executive session earlier this evening at 6:15 p.m. It was a special meeting to, oh, sorry, it was a special meeting to discuss a labor contract and pending potential litigation per RCW 42.30.140, PRN4, PRNA, and RCW 42.30.110, PRN1, PRNI. No action is anticipated to follow in open session. I wanted to talk a bit about the new Transportation Advisory Board. On tonight's consent agenda, Agenda Bill 7697 asks council to adopt an ordinance and confirm the appointments to the Transportation Advisory Board. This is a brand-new city board who will support the city's transportation planning efforts. The first item of business for this new board will be to work on the city's first-ever mobility master plan. The city hasn't created a new board since 2007, so this is a pretty big deal that we're starting out with this new group. The recommended board members are A.J. Magali, Marisol Visser, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing names, Stephanie Solomon, Sujata Ghol, Nina Milligan, Tom McDonald, Cynthia Crass, Kyle Ox, Kobe Sundra, Derek Delvalley, Emma Grubie, Madeleine Ye. And I thank all of you and any of you that are here this evening that volunteered and interviewed for this really important group. Text to 911 launches in Issaquah and across King County. Issaquah's 911 call center can accept texts from those who are unable to call during an emergency. Text to 911 is a new service in King County that will help those who are deaf, hard-of-hearing, speech impaired, and anyone who might be unsafe if they were to be heard by an intruder or an abusive partner. While texting to 911 is a vital tool that increases accessibility to- While texting to 911 is a vital tool that increases accessibility to emergency services, the preferred method for those who can speak is to call. And the key message to remember is, call if you can and text if you can't. I will be running a workshop in January called Interested in Running for Office. It's on Saturday, January 26, 2019. This is for anyone who's interested in running for office. Among other things, participants will learn about being a local elected official. The workshop will be in the, located at the community center in the View Room, and we're advertising it on social media right now. Trailhead Direct. In 2018, this was the first year of a two-year pilot project for Trailhead Direct. Trailhead Direct, which is co-led by King County Metro and King County Parks, offered weekend and holiday service to some of the most popular hiking destinations in the region, including Mount Si, the Issaquah Alps, and Mailbox Peak. The transit to trail service made it possible for more hikers to explore King County's mountain forests without having to drive or park. Passengers boarded the three routes for a total of 2,373 times, 20,373 times during the season. Route 634 to the Issaquah Alps had 8,526 boardings during the 2018 season, from April till the final weekend in October. And the last item in the mayor's report this evening is about donations for the acquisition for Cougar Mountain. Following the December 3rd city council meeting and the decision to purchase the Burisma property, we have heard from several residents who have generously offered to give a donation to assist in that acquisition. On tonight's agenda is AB 7713, which is the ordinance allowing the city to receive donations towards the Burisma acquisition. Should council adopt this ordinance tonight, the city will begin accepting donations once the ordinance goes into effect, likely around January 15th. After that date, information will be posted on the city website that will inform interested donors as to their options, whether online or in person, and direct them through the process. Donors will be provided the city's municipal tax ID number as the donation is eligible to be tax deductible. Donors will want to confirm with a tax advisor to determine their individual eligibility. And that concludes the mayor's report this evening. Proceeding to the consent calendar. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance. If authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
Yes.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? And I'm not seeing anyone. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move we adopt the consent calendar as listed in this evening's published agenda.
Second? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you. First item under regular business is AB 7329, Agreement for Dedication of Land. And I'd like to invite Land Development Manager Lucy Sloman to make a presentation.
Welcome.
Good evening. At Land and Shore, we made a longer presentation, which was included in your packet. This is sort of a summary presentation from that. And I, of course, am happy to discuss any of the items that I breeze over. Just as a bit of background and introduction, Gateway Apartments, which is approximately here in the slide, has about 400 units along Newport Way. The site development permit or land use permit was approved in 2015. It is currently under construction, and the first temporary certificate of occupancies were issued in October of this past year. So this agenda bill is requesting the council grant the mayor or her designated authority to accept the dedication. This is the last step in a multi-year process. The Wolf Company, who is the owner and developer of the Gateway Apartments, proposed a dedication that contains a multi-use trail, parkland, and wetland. I'll go into more detail in a minute about those. And this dedication would implement council-adopted plans, including the Rowley Development Agreement, the Central Issaquah Standards, and the Park Strategic Plan, and I will also go into that in a little more detail. So I'm going to go through kind of each of these components and tell you a little bit more about them, just to make, in case you're not familiar with the area, the area that I'm going to zoom in on is this sort of southern portion that I'm showing here. So the total dedication is just over six acres. The first component is a shared-use route, which we also call a multi-use trail and boardwalk. It's shown in blue. The turquoise area is also being dedicated. Implementation of this, or dedication of this implements the Central Issaquah Standards. The community space that was shown in the Central Issaquah Plan included a neighborhood park, which I'm showing here, and then the shared-use route over to the Rowley properties. The dedication includes both land and improvements. The dark blue is the only portion that would receive a park impact fee credit. The trail is 10 to 12 feet wide, depending on which segment we're discussing. Where the trail goes through the wetland, it is what is called a diamond pier system. And as was discussed at Land and Shore, the blue portion is the dedication, but I want to emphasize that Wolf Company is building the trail that extends from the eastern edge of the Gateway property to 19th Avenue. It's not shown on, it wasn't shown on our original map because it's not part of the dedication, but the construction of the trail would be complete all the way to the next roadway. It also implements this little piece of the Park Strategic Plan. The second component is a park. That is shown in green and yellow in this location. This also implements the Central Issaquah Standards and the Park Strategic Plan. As I mentioned, the park was shown here, it's been moved closer to Newport Way. The park was also, excuse me. The park was also shown in the Park Strategic Plan as element 13. The proposal dedicates the land, receives some park impact fee credit, and has preliminary improvements that set the stage for the future. These improvements include grading walls, parking, utility stubs, and grass. With this dedication, in the future, the Parks Department will pursue a neighborhood conversation to ensure that the improvements that are put here reflect the needs of the community. The third and final component is the wetland, which is shown in orange. This would implement both the Rowley Development Agreement and the Park Strategic Plan. It would include the dedication of the land, but there would be no park impact fee credit except for that, which I've already mentioned, is associated with the boardwalk. And the boardwalk would be the only improvements. This is Park Strategic Plan element number seven. And then more specifically, in the Rowley Development Agreement, it sets up the ability to make improvements in the restoration of Tibbetts Creek. And finally, just to review some of the public benefits, I think I've covered the ones associated with implementing Central Issaquah Park Strategic Plan and the Rowley Development Agreement. But I would also point out that it establishes a non-motorized shortcut between Newport Way and the Mountains to Sound Greenway and the Rowley properties and Gilman Boulevard. That's been of interest, given that there was a desire for mixed uses in this area, but the inability to get the developers to build it. And so having a better route to retail and commercial function seems important for that part of the city. It would provide a neighborhood park in an area where there is currently no park available, and the park would have preliminary improvements. And finally, it would set us up for acquiring, preserving, and restoring critical areas in Creekside Habitat, which the city has pursued along Issaquah Creek. And this is an important opportunity along Tibbetts Creek. I think I ran through that, but...
You're at the end?
I am at the end.
Thank you, Lucy. Are there any questions for Lucy? Councilmember Hunt?
My first question is about that last bullet point. And I think you said it, but it doesn't show it on the slide. This is to set us up to do the restoration, but this restoration is not covered in the work that is proposed as part of the dedication.
Right. This acquires the land. The Rowley Development Agreement had components related to this. So part of the responsibility falls on the Rowleys if they pursue creek restoration, and it falls, part of it would fall on the city as well, for the area outside of the creek and its buffer.
So I think you said in your remarks, it sets us up to do this future work. Okay, I wanted to clarify that. And then the next question I had is about the pier. So the pier and the walkway, it's anticipated that that will move at some point because of the creek restoration process. And I wanted to know if we could have an estimate of how much that would, is expected to cost?
So we don't know the cost at this time. And part of the attraction for using this particular system was that, the boardwalk, diamond pier system, was that it is a kit of parts, and it can be disassembled and reassembled. So because the creek restoration and relocation has not been designed, we were not able to put the bridge where it needs to go. But it will be able, predominantly for labor costs, be able to reuse what we're getting now to bridge the future creek location.
Do we have any sense of the cost, then?
No, because we, it's a predominantly labor cost, and so labor would depend on the cost at that time. I would, though, point out, thanks to your giving me a question ahead of time, I did speak to the Rowleys, and they pointed out that the easement that we have negotiated with them to complete the trail from the eastern edge of the Gateway property to 19th Avenue includes the, A, the ability to relocate the boardwalk in association with the creek relocation, but it also puts the cost of relocating the boardwalk on the Rowleys. So that while we don't have those numbers at this time, it does provide a certain reassurance, I hope, to the city that those costs will not be borne by us.
And, and part of the restoration, my understanding from the discussion at Land and Shore was part of the restoration would be funded by grant funding or funding that you would, that the city would pursue with the Rowleys. And is that a separate funding, then, from what would be used to move the walkway? Or is that part of that discussion?
I, I think we would certainly look for opportunities to fund as much as we could through the grant program, both for the city's areas and the Rowley's areas. Because doing all that work jointly will probably lead to the most success by getting as many invasive plants out as possible. In terms of whether the grants would cover the relocation of the boardwalk, it's hard to say at this time, because even if we had specific grants identified, the criteria and what they're able to cover may change by the time we're ready to apply for those.
Okay. But you said, you said also that creek location is part of the rally. That covered that, too. And then what's the timeline for the creek move and the restoration?
There isn't a specific timeline established. The Rowleys have begun discussions with the city to begin the process. They have a very conceptual design that was created at the time that they did the first phase of restoration. And they are discussing in the next year or two, coming back to us and working through more details. But it's a multi-jurisdictional process, which makes it difficult to identify. I would, however, say that the development agreement, though it didn't set a specific timeline, because we didn't know if it would be possible to acquire the property. But the development agreement does rely on the limitations to the Rowley's property if they don't move the creek. So the area that is just to the east, this area right here of where the creek is, there are restrictions on developing this area. So they will, at some point, need to make a decision that they will either relocate the creek so that they have more developable area, or restrict their property.
And then I have a last question about the park and facility maintenance estimate. And this may be a question for Director Watling. I think it's, it's great that we have an estimate of how much the maintenance will cost and facility maintenance will cost. I wondered what that estimate is based on, if there are other parks that we could get this kind of information, or is it based on other parks that, this is other examples we could look at? And then also if we could plan on checking in in a year to see how accurate the estimate is. Because as that information's helpful, it's also good to know how accurate it is, how accurate we actually can be in terms of predicting these kinds of maintenance costs.
And thank you for pointing that out. This has been a partnership between two departments, and I would cede to Director Watling.
Great question. So Jeff Watling, Parks Recreation Director. That estimate, that projected cost, is based upon our projected hours that we see for 2019 for this space. I would point out that that estimate of hours is based upon its condition at the time of dedication. So we anticipate that cost of $11,000 is to maintain that site and property as is. So trail maintenance, maintenance of the boardwalk for the year, and really just general rough mowing of an undeveloped park space. In terms of sort of measuring what our costs are, as we, we'll be doing this with existing staff. We don't anticipate new staff. So as we certainly are able to track hours worked within that space, we'll be able to get a decent reflection of how well that estimate is for this site. As Lucy had mentioned, we anticipate in future years really being informed by public engagement and likely bringing a capital request for what that park's going to be, as is our practice now with agenda bills, as we look at whether it's a dedication or our own capital investment, be able to put these anticipated maintenance and operation costs so we understand what the responsibilities are. We would anticipate when we come back to develop that park, we would have an updated M&amp;O number at that time.
Any other questions? Councilmember Hunt?
Councilmember Ray?
So as I understand it, the boardwalk terminates on 19th Avenue?
Yes, it does.
Now, are there any existing sidewalks or trails or anything on 19th that would connect that stretch of trail into kind of the larger network of trails in the, in the city?
So that is, you're right, it is a somewhat undeveloped area. However, the Rowleys have been preparing for this connection. They have been installing gravel sidewalks, way, submitting permits for wayfinding signage, and otherwise trying to support the connection in this sort of preliminary, the preliminary character of this area. And this area is anticipated to be more fully developed as they build out their development agreement.
So as this area develops, the plan would be to extend this trail and tie it in with at least Gilman Boulevard?
So the trail probably wouldn't be extended, but there would be a sidewalk system that would... would extend there. And in the interim, there would be gravel sidewalks.
Okay, great, thank you.
No questions? Deputy Counsel President Bateese, followed by President Mertz.
Thank you for the presentation. Lucy, that the, the triangle property southeast of the intersection of Newport Way and Gateway's Entry Road, I realize that that's not part of the proposed dedication, but when we talk about maintenance cost in that, is that part of all of that? I know we've got stormwater drains and, and, or is that separate?
That's separate. So I, I did note here, it's been kind of confusing because some of our best graphics are from the site development permit. When we thought this triangle parcel would have been part of the dedication, so it shows up inconsistency, inconsistently through the materials. At the current time, this triangle parcel is not being dedicated. There is a stormwater vault in there. The city would have an easement and the ability to maintain the vault, but would not be responsible for any of the landscape or surface improvements.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mertz?
You know, I had a question that I realized I didn't ask at Land and Shore, and I should. So does, does Tibbetts Creek get hydrodynamically feisty? Like, it doesn't seem like big enough that it would flood in the conventional sense, but what's the, what's the hydrodynamics and what's the height of the, of the, of the bridge that's going to go across in response to that?
So the hydrodynamic feistiness, I cannot speak to. I have not, I think since the improvements were made under I-90, a decade, no, more than a decade ago, maybe 15, 20 years ago, there has not been extensive flooding in that area. There is a representative from the rallies here who may be able to speak in more detail about that. As for the height, the, this is what the board, these images on the left are not from this particular project. These are from the brochure on the Diamond Pier system. The images on the right are from the permit set. So you can see that where the boardwalk switches from being a trail to a boardwalk, it's quite high. I understand it to be about 10 feet. As we get over to here, the boardwalk, as you can see, is dropping. One of the challenges and the reason that the boardwalk makes this sort of strange dogleg is to have ADA, meet ADA requirements. So over the creek specifically, I would guess it's a few feet.
I guess the question, to ask it more technically rather than just saying feisty, there's, there's a 100-year floodplain. Is there something less than 100-year floodplain? And we do, and do we know whether the landing, if you will, of this trail on 19th is within the whatever less? I mean, I would hate to, I wouldn't want to impose saying it can't be within the 100-year floodplain, but there must be some, you know, if, if it, if it rises, it, you know, how often is that landing at the eastern end going to be underwater? I guess would be the question.
So I, I am not, off the top of my head, aware of flooding. Much of the city is in the 100-year floodplain.
I mean, no. I mean, okay, well anyhow, be that as it may. My question is, is it, how often is it, is it going to be underwater at the, at the eastern end?
I'm not able to answer that. I, I just don't, I don't know the frequency of flooding at that particular location. I'm, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Goodman?
I guess to follow up on Toll's question, not to put words in Toll's mouth, but maybe, maybe the easier question is, or the concern is, is there assurance that, that the bridge is built at a height where if there were to be a water event, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be in trouble? And that, that seems to be the more relevant question. Oh, Emily has a question.
Emily? Administrator Moon?
Thanks. Our engineers will certainly look at that. That's always a design consideration, as it was with the bridge over the creek at Confluence Park. So it's something that we'll analyze. Every situation is a little different. Bridge construction is a little different. There are places where we do allow some amount of flooding and others where it's not practical, appropriate. So we'll take a look at that. It's always a design consideration, but don't have floodplain elevations that we can describe to you right now. And we'd be happy to get back to council with some additional information in the future.
Additional questions? Councilmember Goodman?
There are no other questions. I'll make a motion since it came as a recommendation from Land and Shore.
Not seeing any other questions.
All right. I would move to authorize the mayor or her designee to accept dedication of the shared-use route, park, and wetland property from the Wolf Company in the area of the Gateway Apartments along Newport Way Northwest as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there a discussion? Councilmember Goodman?
The only thing I would like to add to the discussion is that I appreciate the presentation at Land and Shore. I thought it was very thorough. And the reason I want to mention this is because it's a fairly small area and, and, but we hit all the issues. And I, I want to point that out because that's not always the case. And we let staff know, and that's always the case. And I wanted staff to know that I thought they did a really good job. And I also wanted to say thank you to the rallies for their collaborative work on this project.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Are there any, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of authorizing the mayor or her designee to accept dedication of the shared-use route, park, and wetland property from the Wolf Company in the area of the Gateway Apartments along Newport Way as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you, Lucy. The next item on the agenda this evening is AB 7712, Financing Options, Burksma Property Acquisition. This is one of three bills following up on the Burksma property acquisition authorized by council on December 3rd. And I'd like to invite interim finance director Beth Goldberg to the lectern. Beth will be making presentations for all three Burksma-related agenda bills.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. As the mayor indicated, I'm Beth Goldberg, interim finance director. And I am here to present tonight on three agenda bills related to the Burksma property acquisition. I have been joking, riffing on that, how many people does it take to screw in a lightbulb? How many agenda bills does, acquire a property? So you get three tonight. So I will jump in here and first I want to give you an overview of the three agenda bills and the subject matters I will be covering tonight. The first one is Agenda Bill 7712. And this is a three-part agenda bill. It designates a financing strategy. Some of this, we started talking about December 3rd. I will go into a little bit more detail this evening. It presents for council's consideration a bond ordinance that would be required to execute the financing option that we are recommending. And this bond ordinance does also include a bond refunding element. We have an opportunity to refund a series of bonds that were issued in 2009, and this ordinance would execute that. And then last, this would, if council approves, would authorize the city to pursue grant funding in support of the, the property acquisition costs. Agenda Bill 7718 is an amendment to the 2019 adopted budget to authorize the city to make authorized expenditures related to the Burksma property acquisition. And then the last agenda bill, 7713, would allow the city to accept donations from individuals who are interested in supporting the city's pursuit of this property acquisition. So I will, first, before I go into the agenda bills, want to remind council members of the purchase price and the purchase partners for the property. We discussed this on December 3rd, but so that everyone's grounded, the purchase price is $11 million. We're purchasing the property in partnership with King County and the Trust for Public Land. The City of Isaquah's share at closing, which is expected to happen on February 28th, is $7.645 million. You'll see in the final column of this table that we've designated the final cost at $8.23 million. And this is because we are very confident that we will be successful in securing grants to help offset these costs. And I want to lay that foundation now because this will become important as I lay out our preferred financing option. So Agenda Bill 7712, and specifically the element of this agenda bill that would authorize the administration to pursue grants. As I mentioned, we are very confident that we will be successful in securing a series of grants. We talked about some of these on December 3rd. The first of which is Grant, King County Land Conservation Initiative Grant. We are expecting to hear back on this grant application by late 2019. As I indicated on the previous slide, this would generate about $5.322 million, I think I'm rattling those numbers off in the right sequence, million in grant funding. $3 million of this will go to the Trust for Public Lands to repay the loan that they're providing for the land. And then the balance would come back to the city, $2.322 million. And then we're expecting to be candidates for several state grants in 2021, about $1.5 million for a total of $3.822 million in grant funding. So one element of Agenda Bill 7712 would be council authorizing the administration to pursue these grants. In terms of the financing strategy itself, as I mentioned, the city is required to bring $7.645 million to the closing of the property. And the administration has considered four financing strategies for how to pay for this $7.645 million. The first that we're calling Option 1 is a hybrid financing strategy that would use a combination of general fund fund balance and a bank loan. The fund balance amount totals $3.822 million. You will perhaps recall that this was the number from the previous slides that we are anticipating grant funding for. And, and we felt like there's a good alignment between fund balance and, and this grant strategy. And then the second element of this would be to secure a bank loan for $3.823 million. The other options that we considered, Option 2, would be to fund the purchase price entirely through general fund fund balance, so $7.645 million out of general fund fund balance. Third option would be to finance the entire $7.645 million with a bank loan. And the fourth option would be to fund it entirely with long-term bonds. The administration is recommending Option 1, the hybrid financing strategy. And these next slides I'm going to go through are going to explain why this is the preferred option as opposed to the other options that I just mentioned. First, in terms of cost of the financing strategy, so Option 1, 3, and 4 use some element of, of long-term financing, whether that be through a bank loan or through long-term bonds. The Option 1, the blend of fund balance and the bank loan, offers us the lowest cost, the lowest financing cost at $996,000, just over $996,000. And this is because we would be financing less on, on a bank loan or, or, or bonds and would be foregoing some interest on our balances in fund balance. But the interest rate on this is lower than the interest rate on, on the actual borrowing. So that combination is what gives us a lower cost of the four options, or of the three financing options. Of course, the fund balance option is a lower cost than that. But as I will explain in a moment, we have concerns about drawing fund balance by the amount that would be required under Option 2. Fund balance, here we are. These, the bar to the left of this slide shows fund balance as it is now, based on the 2019 adopted budget. We have an unrestricted fund balance of $23.2 million. And as you are all aware, we have a fund balance policy that says that we should maintain 15% to 20% of that fund balance for unexpected emergencies and have that on hand at all, all times. So 20% of expenditures is $10.6 million, which makes about $12.6 million, I'm sorry, $10.6 million, which leaves about $12.6 million available should the council choose to use it. Under Option 1, the middle bar there, we would draw down $3.82 million of fund balance. Because we are increasing expenditures to purchase the property, we actually need to increase our fund balance target to $12.1 million. Option 1 would leave $7.2 million available over and above the target should something unexpected happen. Option 2 draws it down further, leaving only $3.4 million. And as we, as an administration, discuss the implications of this, we're just not feeling like there's enough wiggle room with that $3.4 million. So we're not comfortable recommending that we go with Option 2 for that reason. I also want to point out that this $3.82 million out of fund balance, again, ties to the amounts that we expect to receive from the grants. So once we receive those grants, expected at the end of 2019 and then 2021, we can replenish fund balance with those grant proceeds and bring, and bring that fund balance back up. That would be council's discretion. The other opportunity would be to appropriate it for something else. But there is an opportunity through this to replenish the fund balance back to the original levels. So a little bit more on why we're recommending Option 1. As I mentioned, a little bit in my comments, it's a blend of short and long-term financing that is spreading the costs, not only between current taxpayers, but also future taxpayers that will benefit from the city's ownership of this property as open space. It, it allows us to match the funding with the grant strategies that we, we feel like we are going to be able to pursue. And we, we, so allows us to take advantage of a low interest rate environment for the long-term costs, but for the short-term costs, draw down the fund balance to support that. And then, as I mentioned a couple of slides ago, it's the lowest-cost option of all of the long-term strategies. I'll also note that looking at a bank loan as proposed under this option as opposed to the bond financing strategy under Option 4, it's a little bit easier to execute from a staff perspective. There aren't as many requirements in terms of printing official statements and things of that nature. So it's a little bit easier from a staffing perspective to execute. And it means that the process will go faster. So we'll actually have the cash in hand, assuming council approves this strategy tonight, prior to closing. Whereas going with long-term bonds, we'd have to float the, the acquisition on, on fund balance wholly for a short period of time while we completed that transaction. So as council moves into the deliberations of this, which we're not quite there at, one of the questions we're going to ask council to weigh in on is whether they support Option 1 as you're, as you're deliberating in a short period of time. As I mentioned, pursuing the implementation of financing strategy, Option 1, or if the council were to decide, Options 3 or 4 would require the adoption of a bond ordinance that would authorize the administration to secure the, the bank loan. So we've got in front of you a bond ordinance that would, would do this. It was prepared by our bond counsel, who was in the audience tonight, Alice Ostick. We also have Maggie Marshall from our bond advisor, who's also here in the audience tonight. If you have any questions, Alice is available to answer them. The bond ordinance also recommends a refunding on a 2009 bond series that was callable, is the, is the official term, or eligible for refinancing as of December 1st, 2018. The low-interest rate environment of today does suggest that we will achieve some savings by reissuing the bonds at a lower interest rate. And we're estimating that it would generate about $90,000 in savings. generate about $90,000 in savings over a 10-year period when those bonds would be retired in 2028. So the bond ordinance that is attached to Agenda Bill 7712 would also authorize the administration to pursue that bond refunding. So with that, I will conclude my remarks on Agenda Bill 7712. We are seeking a council motion that would authorize the administration to pursue financing Option 1, adopt the bond and refunding ordinance, and then authorize the administration to secure grants to offset, partially offset, the price of acquiring the Burgsma property.
Thank you, Beth. So we'll take questions. Councilmember Hunt?
So the bill refers to a 10-year bank loan at a cost plus cost of issuance, and I wondered if you could explain what that cost of issuance is?
Yes, so it includes a variety of costs, including costs associated with our bond counsel and our bond advisor. There are also some other costs. I believe there's some escrow costs in there as well and bank fees. So that's all part of the cost of issuance, and it's standard practice to secure a loan that would cover those costs as well, and so that becomes part of the financing.
And could you provide an estimate of how much?
Yeah, so the bond ordinance in front of you is, designates an amount of $4,025,000. The amount needed to secure the Burgsma property under Option 1, financing Option 1, is 3.823 million. So the delta between those two numbers is about $202,000. There is some wiggle room in there, so it's not likely we will need the full amount, but if we estimated that too low in the RFPs, we'll be issuing an RFP to secure a lender, assuming council approves the bond ordinance tonight, we'll be issuing an RFP tomorrow. If we didn't provide wiggle room and the RFP responses came back higher, then we'd have to come back to all of you, and that, we'd like to avoid that.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Councilmember Winterstein, followed by Councilmember Ray.
Thank you. Thank you, Beth. And the material in the packet is well-presented as well, so I appreciate everything we have in front of us this evening. The Land Conservation Initiative Grant, it only mentions in the packet that if we were to be successful and receive any monies for that, from that application, it would be in late 2019. Can you get any more, we know, any more specific on when that might be in 2019?
Nothing new from what we discussed December 3rd.
So when, I just, when is it?
When? So what we've heard from King County, they are projecting fourth quarter of 2019 is when those funds would be available. We have been, we've received notice that the application period, applications are due for this grant cycle March 6th. They will submit recommendations to the council by July 1st of this year and anticipate funds available for recipients fourth quarter of 2019.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
So I probably missed this, but if you could rewind, you were talking about that the loan is roughly, or the general fund contribution in Option 1 covers, will be covered by the anticipated grants? But I thought we had a larger number of grants than the 3-plus million dollars we were talking about in general fund. So I'm just trying to balance the numbers.
Yeah, so I'm going to go back to this slide here because I think this may help me responding to your question. So we believe that we are going to be eligible for 5.322 million for the LCI grant in 2019, 3 million of which would go to the Trust for Public Land, which is carrying a loan on our behalf, a year-long loan on our behalf, to help with the financing costs. So of that 5.322 million, 3 million would go to pay off that loan, and we had a question from Council President Martz before the meeting about when, the timing of that loan. It's a year, so from the time of closing, so end of February 2020, we would have to pay that. So there's wiggle room on the LCI. It would pay back the 3 million, and then the balance, the 3.22, would replenish, partially replenish fund balance. And then when we get 1.5 million in grants from state funding sources in 2021, that makes the fund balance whole.
Great, thank you. That makes perfect sense. I was missing $3 million someplace, and you found it for me. One last.
If only I could find 3 million more. It's that easily all the time.
So on the bank loan, that's a fixed interest rate?
It is, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Patis?
So just thank you for the presentation, and I wanted to echo that I did feel like this was really put together very well. It had a lot of, a lot of the details that I think everyone was looking for. In 2021, with those grant opportunities, do you just have a rough timing? I realize there might be different grants, but is that early in the year, or does that come later in the year? Just wondering from, as we're wrapping up, looking at that closing out with the general fund.
Likely mid to later, but we won't know that until state, so this is through the Recreation Conservation Office, RCO, so they will issue what that application cycle and those dates are. Later 2019 into 2020, we'll have a better understanding of what that looks like. We do anticipate, as I shared on December 3rd, just to reiterate, applying likely for three grants through that cycle. Two through the WWRP program, Washington Wildlife Recreation Program, that we feel like this would be a strong candidate for local parks acquisition money, urban wildlife habitat acquisition dollars, and then as well, Land and Water Conservation Fund. So we'd be submitting three applications, but we won't know those dates until we get the grant information from RCO.
So three grants with different timing?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
More questions? Councilmember Winterstein, followed by Councilmember Goodman.
No.
I'll come back to you.
Beth, in the packet for Option Number 3, the last sentence, when you line the options, I mean, and you addressed the pluses and the minuses in a couple places, but it seems to me that the last sentence in that paragraph, it says it would only have the ability to issue 2.355 million tax-exempt debt for the balance of 2019 if we went with Option 3, which would be borrow the whole thing from the bank, don't use any, don't use any of our cash on hand. And I'm going to say cash on hand instead of any fund balance, just because it's, helps me think about what it really is better. Is that, so that doesn't sound necessarily like much of a drawback. I realize it doesn't give us as maybe some of the advantage, but that doesn't sound like a big drawback, because where I sit today, and this is where my question is, is I don't know right now of any other plans to borrow any money that we have. And so the fact that this approach, and which would then limit us to a total of 10 million in the BQ bonds, or 10 million for the whole year, any type of borrowing, why is that a drawback, that we would only have 2.355 left?
So the council, in adopting the 2019 budget, indicated a desire for capital projects beyond which the city had funding plans and funding sources for. We have an Ad Hoc Finance Committee meeting coming up a week from Thursday, Wednesday, who's counting? 10 days away, nine days away, where we're going to be talking about that unfunded capital list. Similar to this Burgsma property acquisition, there's kind of a finite list of places where you could go for that funding, fund balance, additional debt, based on ability to pay back the debt. And we, the administration, felt like we needed to keep those options open for the council to consider when looking at that unfunded list. Now, you could argue that, okay, put this all on the bank loan, and we'd have more fund balance to draw on for those unfunded lists, but we wanted to keep that flexibility. There's flexibility in having that liquidity, and so we felt like that was, that was the advantage. But as you do point out, under both Option 1 and Option 3, we are limited under a bank loan to $10 million of tax-exempt debt. We're comfortable under both scenarios that it's not likely that the city is going to have needs in 2019 that will exceed that $10 million figure.
Yeah, and, thank you. You've answered my question. I realize it was a tough question. I'm sorry I didn't get an opportunity to give it to you ahead of time and for more other consideration within the administration. I do view the acquisition of land and the need to have cash at the time of closing as probably a little bit different than most of the way we fund capital projects, especially those that are multi-year, which may be transportation improvement-related, and just the payment schedules on those are a little bit different. So that was also the reason for my other question about, so when will we maybe receive that other, that 5.3 million in grant? What time would it be? Okay, I learned that would be sometime in fourth quarter. We don't have any more specific information from that. And so those two options, 1 and 3, actually feel very similar to me, because at this time, yes, I am part of that, I'm going to be part of that finance conversation we're going to have in 10 days, who's counting? But at this point, we haven't committed, we don't have a plan yet on how to fund, what additional capital projects to do and how to fund them. And that's really as much my point as anything. This is a strategy just giving us, I guess, from a borrowing capacity, more room compared to Option 3, but we would just be spending cash on hand instead of borrowing. And in both cases, we're talking about getting our hands on money in 2019.
Yeah, and I would say, and Alice may want to jump in here, but I would also say that the other advantage of Option 1 over Option 3 is it is a slightly lower cost, because the cost to secure the loan, the interest rate on the loan is going to be higher than the interest rate that we, the rate of interest that we accumulate on the fund balance. So the interest rate, I believe, on the loan was, or this is total true interest cost, so this includes everything, on Option 3 is 3.07%. On Option 1, the rate on, the percentage on the loan is the same, but what's drawing it down is that the interest that we earn on fund balance is at 2.5% now. We modeled it out to 2.5 to 3%. So that's what's bringing the cost of borrowing down. So that, I would argue, is the advantage of Option 1 over Option 3.
All right, thank you, Beth.
Sure. I just wanted to add a couple of clarifications. Hi, Alice Ostick with Stradling. Good to see all of you again this evening. Couple of clarifications I wanted to throw in there. One, that $10 million limit relates to bank-qualified debt. The city has the ability to borrow more if it needed to, but the bank-qualified debt is the sort of lowest possible interest rate that would be available to you. And all of these numbers that are in here are the estimates that PFM has kind of put together. We won't know until we actually get the bids from the banks what the interest rate really will be. But a bank-qualified rate assumes that the city will not issue more than 10 million in the year and gets you the lowest possible rate. So that's one reason for sort of strategizing how you use that $10 million. The second piece I would add is because you have this fair amount of certainty with regard to obtaining some grants, there's a trade-off between borrowing money and then having some sort of prepayment penalty or something like that, if you were to go to the bank and then say, we're going to repay it within a year, or we're going to repay it within a few months as soon as we get this grant source in. There could potentially be sort of an interest rate penalty or a little bit of a, you know, a penalty. So overall, that amount of money, again, it seemed like if the city is very certain to receive these grants, then it made sense maybe not to borrow and pay a bank, you know, kind of that extra penalty amount on that side of it. So I hope those kind of help clarify the thinking in putting that together.
Well, it was good additional information. I was under the impression that the 10 million wasn't just limited to the bank-qualified. I thought we discussed it on December 3rd. I may be remembering that wrong, but thank you for that clarification.
Right, and the bank qualification is a tax-exempt rate there, so, yeah.
Thank you, Allison. I have Councilmember Goodman, followed by Deputy Council President Patis.
I didn't have a question.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Patis?
So I think some of the questions were just answered for me, but I did have one more question regarding the refunding of the 2009 LTGO bond series. So is that, as I'm reading it, I understand the savings, and is it just a basic refinancing? Those are rolled in? There's probably a refinancing payment, and they're just rolled in? There's nothing really beyond that process?
Yes, and it's, you know, it's 10 years, so it translates into about $9,000 a year. So had we not been recommending a financing plan for the Burgsma strategy, it probably wouldn't make sense to be doing the refunding now, but since we're going to market anyway, and, you know, $90,000 is $90,000, $9,000 a year is $9,000 a year, we felt like it made sense to pursue this at this time.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Winterstein?
I do have two more, so I know, I want to get them all out before we proceed here. One, this is a logistics question, and I'm not sure who the best person to answer it is. Perhaps it's you, Beth? I know that we've often had to give authorization in the past to apply for grants, but it's like, we're kind of giving like a two-year in advance authorization for grants. I assume that's okay, but could somebody kind of speak to it? My memory is things are usually a little bit closer at hand, and there's nothing, so I mean, with the action as it's crafted in front of us that we may be considering here in a moment, it includes authorization to apply for grants in 2020, which is, you know, over a year, less than two years away. So I just wanted to have, hear a few comments about that procedurally.
Yeah, great question. So absolutely, this authorization allows us to proceed with the King County application this year. As we've talked with staff from the state, from RCO, we believe this is enough, but should RCO amend their rules in any way, shape, or form, we may need to come back and seek your approval to apply for those specific grants. But for the information we have right now on hand from the agencies, this is enough.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. And my final question is, you, thank you for Exhibit A, which provides the summary. Well, that might be the next bill. That's where we're actually doing the budget amendment, so I'll hold off on that one. That's my final question.
Additional questions on this Agenda Bill, the first of three Agendas? Okay, is there a motion? Oh, sorry. Question or motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I would move to, one, authorize the administration to pursue financing Option 1 to finance the city's $7.645 million closing payment for the Burgsma property acquisition. Two, adopt ordinance number? Relating to contracting indebtedness, authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $4.025 million of limited tax general obligation bonds, to provide funds to pay or reimburse the city's portion of the acquisition of certain real property, and to pay the cost of issuance and sale of the bonds, and authorizing the issuance of limited tax general obligation refunding bonds in an amount necessary to refund certain outstanding limited tax general obligation bonds of the city to achieve a debt service savings. And three, authorize the administration to apply for grant funds to And three, authorize the administration to apply for grant funds to offset the purchase cost of acquiring the Burgsma property.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Ah, darn it, I thought I could just go right to the vote and not have to reread that. Councilmember Winterstein, Councilmember Hunt.
You could, you know, as submitted, you could. So, a quick question. So, I have a favor to ask, and Jeff, I think it is going to, it is asking it of you. I'm going to support this. And in there, it does say you will be submitting the, and you mentioned it earlier, the waiver. I'm looking for the exact phrase. Phrase is waiver of retroactivity.
Yes.
So, that's the second. There's two. I would just ask, as a courtesy, if I could be notified when first, the first grant application goes in this year, and then also when you do file the waiver of retroactivity. And the only reason I'm asking is, these, you know, it's, if you think about December 3rd, there's a really critical steps and some gates we need to go through, and I just want to be aware, and I don't want to have to worry about, hey, we got that taken care of. Thank you, Jeff.
Absolutely.
And Jeff, just a quick question for you. Even though you're requesting authorization, the actual grant applications would not end up on consent at a future date under an AB? Or they would? Typically, a request to submit a grant would show up as an AB on consent, and would they still do that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, those would come, as I understand, on a future council consent call.
Madam Mayor, tonight's authorization gives us what we believe at this moment in time we would need in order to go forward with submitting grants. So, we would not anticipate putting that on consent. If those rules change, as Jeff spoke about, then it would be on consent, and absolutely on regular business, we will bring back action to accept those grants.
And we can satisfy Councilmember Winterstein's request through providing information at a council meeting in terms of a mayor's report or something else in terms of his questions of, let me know that this has happened.
Certainly. We would be very, very happy to talk about our applications and successes that way.
And it was, Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. I also will be in support, and I thought the agenda bill did a clear job of explaining both the numerical situation, but then also explaining in the text portions what the pros and cons of the different options were. And I appreciated that information. For me, one part that I thought was important and that I wanted to pull out was that the hybrid option will allow some of the funding to come from our current city taxpayers, and then will also allow us to have the future generations, future taxpayers. And since this is open space and it will be of value to the city today and also the future, I think that that hybrid approach makes sense.
Thank you. Any other comments? I saw Deputy Council President Bateese.
So, I'll be supporting this this evening, and I really think that after having an opportunity to hear this several times and then being able to read through the packet, which, again, I felt like was really well-presented in terms of the different options and allowing us to really think through those different options. But Option 1 does seem to make really good sense to me. I'll be supporting this this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman, did I see your hand go up?
No.
Are there any, is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of authorizing the administration to pursue financing Option 1 to finance the city's $7.645 million closing payment for the Burgsma property acquisition and adopting ordinance number 2862 relating to contracting indebtedness, authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $4.025 million of limited tax general obligation bonds, to provide funds to pay or reimburse the city's portion of the acquisition of certain real property, and to pay the costs of issuance and sale of the bonds, and authorizing the issuance of limited tax general obligation refunding bonds in an amount necessary to refund certain outstanding limited tax general obligation bonds of the city to achieve a debt service savings, and authorizing the administration to apply for grant funds to offset the purchase cost of acquiring the Burgsma property, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes unanimously. And we're back up to Beth for AB 7718, 2019 budget amendment for the Burgsma property. This is the second of the three agenda bills on Burgsma tonight. Thank you.
Yes, so, okay, so, Agenda Bill 7718, in some respects, is a bit of a housekeeping ordinance in that it does provide us appropriation authority to actually make the payment on the property. So, you have authorized a funding strategy, but we need budget authority to make the expenditures. So, it does allocate $7.645 million for the payment, and it then adds an additional appropriation of $449,000 for the anticipated debt service payments that will come in 2019. Now, I do want to point out that when we did the analysis on all of the options, and I touched on this in the packet materials, we did the analysis based on a level debt service. So, basically roughly level payments, even payments throughout the 10-year loan. We do have an option to what is called wrapping the debt service payments around our existing debt service obligations. The city has existing debt that is going to start to fall off in the next couple of years, and we do have an option to structure it so that it literally wraps around that debt, so it evens out the burden on us. If we were to wrap the debt, and this is going to be based on the issuance of the RFP, the debt service payments in 2019 are potentially lower at about $114,000 because it pushes those costs out when our debt service drops off. I believe by 2022, our debt service payments drop off by about $1 million a year, just to give you a flavor of that. So, anyway, but to be safe, we're asking for authorization for the $449,000. If we end up wrapping it, that will revert back to fund balance, and we will not use those proceeds. So, the ordinance before you provides us the appropriation to do that, and we would be seeking a motion to take that action. But before doing that, I wanted to maybe jump ahead a couple of slides because I suspect there may be some questions on this about how the numbers on this chart make sense of the numbers on this chart. So, I'm going to try and make sense of the numbers on this chart. So, I'm going to be focusing on the numbers that are depicted in the middle portion of this chart under the blue heading. And what you will see in the first column, the revenue column, is first, an amount of $3.823 million. This would be revenue coming into the city's general fund based on the loan that you just authorized us to secure. So, we secure the loan, it comes into our coffers as a revenue. And then, on February 28th, when we're estimating that the property acquisition will close, we're required to make a payment of $7.645 million. So, the expenditure line there, you'll see an amount of $8.094 million. That is the sum of the $7.645 million that we will need to pay to acquire the property, plus the $449,000 that we need to transfer to the debt service fund to make the debt service payments that are anticipated later in 2019, assuming a level debt service strategy. So, then if you go down to the middle portion of that chart, that's where you see the $449,000. So, the revenue is the revenue coming from the general fund into the debt service line, and then the expenditure going out. So, that's how that math works.
Questions? Councilmember Winterstein?
Thank you for anticipating my question, and it's exactly what I, the type of breakdown I was looking for. The part of the expenditures out of the general fund is a transfer to the debt service.
Double budgeting at its finest.
Yes, it is. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Is somebody ready to make a motion? Council President Mertz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number...
2863.
...amending the 2019 adopted budget as set forth in ordinance number 2854 concerning revenues, expenditures, and fund balance for various funds for the year 2019, and authorizing the Finance Director to make the necessary adjustments and approving prior expenditures.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Councilmember Winterstein?
I just want to make a comment. I'm sure this is a first. It has to be the first. First business year of a new fiscal calendar, and we're already making, you know, a $7 million...
Adjustment.
Adjustment. And I think that also just speaks to the very unique nature, you know, of what we're doing today. But I just, the irony of, on the first business meeting of the year, we're amending the budget is, wasn't lost on me.
Josie, you are very flexible in exploring what opportunities you would like to invest in. Congratulations, if you vote in favor. Is there any other additional discussion? All those in favor of adopting ordinance number 2863, amending the 2019 adopted budget as set forth in ordinance number 2854 concerning revenues, expenditures, and fund balance for various funds for the year 2019, and authorizing the Finance Director to make the necessary adjustments and approving prior expenditures, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda, AB 7713, gift of funds, Burgsma property acquisition. This is the last of the three agenda bills on the Burgsma property acquisition, and Beth is going to be doing the presentation.
Okay, so, on to Agenda Bill 7713. You may recall at the December 3rd council meeting where you made the decision to pursue this property acquisition, one of the residents making public comment offered a check, waived a check for, written to the city, to make a contribution to help offset the cost of the property acquisition. Subsequent to that council meeting, the city has been approached by other individuals who are also interested in making similar donations. So, that level of interest resulted in us looking at what our options are to accept donations. And state RCW and the city's financial management policy do allow us to accept donations, but it has to be council-authorized before we can accept those donations. So, the ordinance before you, under Agenda Bill 7713, would authorize the city to accept the donations in support of the Burgsma property acquisition. The people making the donations would need to designate that that is their intent with the funds that they are generously offering us. And the city will set up a separate sub-fund within the general fund to be the keeper of those revenues, and will draw on those revenues to help offset our debt service payments that will be coming through the financing strategy that you just approved. We will be accepting checks if people want to mail them in. They need to be made to the city of Issaquah, again designated for the Burgsma property acquisition. They could drop a check off at City Hall, or Perfect Mind, the new revenue management system that Parks just implemented, will also allow people to make contributions if they are so interested online through the Perfect Mind system. And we are required to put public notification in our local newspaper for five days before this ordinance will go into effect. So, if anyone is listening out there, if they could hold on to their money a bit longer, we will be in a position to accept donations starting about January 16th, just over a week from now, same day as Ad Hoc Finance Committee, as a matter of fact.
Thank you, Beth. Are there any questions? Councilmember Goodman?
Yes, thank you, Beth. The question I have is for, and it's probably a more general question, because it would apply to any this ordinance and probably any other future ordinance if we ever adopt one that's similar. What happens to donations that aren't spent? That aren't, like, let's say something falls through, the project falls through, either this one or a future one if we had a similar ordinance? Is the money refunded?
Yeah, we, the way this ordinance is structured, we would have to refund it. We did contemplate, you know, is there a scenario, if there was funding left, you know, could it go for, for example, capital improvements that may occur at future time on the property? We did not feel like at this point, I mean, that's 10 years out, and it would be wonderful if we received $7.645 million in donations, but we did not feel like that was going to be an all-too-likely scenario. But that's how it would work. That's what would be needed to answer your question.
Okay, so, we keep a log then, we account for the funds and who donated?
Correct.
Thanks.
Additional questions? Is somebody prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Councilmember Goodman?
I would move to adopt ordinance number...
2864.
...authorizing the mayor to accept donations to offset the purchase price of the Burgsma property, and authorizing the mayor to use donations for said purpose.
Second.
It's been moved and multiple seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Goodman?
Thanks. So, I just, I just think this is fantastic, that we are even in a position that we need to consider adopting an ordinance because of the interest of the public to donate to a cause. So, I've been part of, I think, city council meetings since 1996, and I've never, ever seen, I think, I thought I'd seen most everything, and I've never seen this before. Now, that's not to say that we don't have very generous community members who, you know, donate land and provide in other ways, but I've never seen a community interested in helping us buy some land. And I just think that, that just says a lot about the importance of this, of this project and to our community, and I just think it's great.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Bateese?
I just felt, well said. Council, Councilmember Goodman, I just, it did my heart good when I, when I looked at that and read about the gifting of funds and just thinking about the community members that would like to come forward and be a part of this, so, fantastic.
Others? Councilmember Winterstein?
Yeah, thank you. Two comments. It was mentioned earlier, I do appreciate it, that anybody who would be considering this, this, we are a nonprofit organization. I think it was mentioned earlier that depending on individual circumstances, the monies donated could be part of a, part of a tax deduction. And the other comment is, I felt the same way. You know, over the months, as we sat here mostly in executive session and looked at this opportunity, and the numbers started emerging and the immensity of the numbers, and we really, we had to keep it to ourselves, and yet, there were many of opportunities when, either via email or in these meetings or elsewhere where the public spoke to us about how important it was. For me personally, it was kind of a lonely feeling because it's really easy to say, "I think you should go buy that for my benefit." And that's what it felt like, and that sounds a little cynical, but it's like, yeah, I mean, and I knew that if we were going to do this, we were going to have to dig deep. And I know how easy it is to say, you know, "Yeah, I think you should go do that," and not have any skin in the game. When, that action, that night on the 3rd, and what you told about since, you said earlier, I mean, that really, that really made me feel good. That was, that's an amazing statement about, as was already said, about how deep some people feel about not only this community and how they want to be part of the giving, but it also means a lot to me personally. I feel like, there's like, it's almost like a comment, like, "We understand it, and you and the city council making this decision, you're not alone. We're willing to put some skin in the game as well." And, boy, that, that really is a real, restores a lot of faith and trust in the process and how we work together. And I do very much appreciate everybody and anybody who's contemplating it or who will step forward. I think it's just a wonderful sign of your commitment to the community.
Thank you. Did I see any other hands go up? Okay. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of adopting ordinance number 2864, authorizing the mayor to accept donations to offset the purchase price of the Burgsma property, and authorizing the mayor to use donations for said purpose, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. The next item on our agenda is good of the order. Do any council members have items they'd like to... Do any council members have items they'd like to share it for good of the order? I had a couple. I just wanted to let you know that I'm going to be going to two Chamber of Commerce meetings this week. First one is the East King County Chamber of Commerce Legislative Coalition Breakfast, which is tomorrow. Usually that is a breakfast where legislators are on a panel addressing the audience of different chamber members, but they've decided to have an electeds panel tomorrow morning, so I'll be sitting on the electives panel. The topics they're going to cover in the Q and A will have to do with, surprise, surprise, affordable housing, transportation, and schools. I'll also be going to the Greater Issaquah Chamber of Commerce this week. I believe it's a luncheon, if I remember, maybe it's a breakfast. But I will be bringing a state-of-the-city comments, and I'm going to be focusing on an update on our strategic planning process and where we are, financial sustainability of the city, and also talking about jobs. I know there's a few project updates they'd also like to hear about as well in terms of road projects and openings, and that's it. I wanted to give you also a bit of a look ahead at the upcoming council meetings. On January 14th, as you've heard, there is a council special meeting. You'll be hearing presentations for Council Position Four for applicants. That will be located in the council chambers prior to the work session. Time is to be determined. We're still waiting to see the number of candidates that we will have. January 14th is, well, second item that day will be the council work session with potential agenda items, including the Gilman Boulevard corridor framework, Old Town and Transit Center parking study. On January 22nd, there will be a meet and greet with council applicants. This will be a special meeting located in the Eagle Room prior to the regular council meeting. And again, for this event, the time is still to be determined. And then on January 22nd, following that, there will be the regular council meeting, and the potential agenda items for that are the updated water system plan. Are there any other items for good of your order? There was an executive session held earlier this evening, which I reported out on, and we are now adjourned.